Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town and Pownell Special Select Board Meeting. November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, six P M. Call the meeting order, please. Board member roll call.
Angie Rowling.
Carl Strohmeyer.
Mike Gardner.
Amy Percy.
Has a pledge of allegiance, please. Everyone rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you. My last. Approval of the agenda, public comment. Minutes on November fourteenth, warrants, select board vacancy announcement, discussion and planning. Part-time cleaning job posting approval, staff appreciation, holiday celebration, lunch and gift discussion. Select board ballot initiative discussion, discussion of town planning in the future. Public comment, executive personnel, executive personnel, executive legal, adjourned. It's all moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda, any changes, corrections? All of them favor?
Aye.
Any public comment?
Um, Jim has his hand up.
Hi, guys, and Angie, Jim Coase is North Mason Hill Road. Hey, I'm just curious about information that should be maybe put on the website, like a board packet or something that we've kind of followed through. I've had a little discussion with Tara and Hannah this morning of whether the letter for from Bill would be uploaded. Tara did say that it would be uploaded as requested. Unfortunately, it has not been uploaded. And I'm just wondering if it's something that is being hidden from us. It is a public information document, in my opinion, but at the same time, um, it just seems like it, no reply, no communications. Um, I, I, I did check the website just recently. It looks like a shortcut was taken just to change the date of the twenty-first meeting to the twenty-sixth. The agenda that's on there is not the correct agenda. It's dated incorrectly. It's also probably got the wrong zoom on there, so now we're putting documents on a certain meeting that is not correct. If people look back down the road to find out what happened at tonight's meeting, they're not going to see the correct meeting under the twenty-sixth. And I'm just going to add to this because it's, it's, it's totally frustrating about minutes not being updated correctly or on time. Five days, which is a requirement. I've tried to work with Tara and I think Hannah to bring this to their attention many, 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 many times. And it just doesn't seem to be getting any better. And it, it kind of just bothered me and between Hannah and myself, I question why the warning of the meeting for the park recreation last week wasn't posted on the website. Wasn't posted at Winchester's. I'm not sure if it was posted at the Village Market, but uh, we, there are requirements that need to be done, and I'm just curious of why we can't get these requirements done the way they should be done. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Any more public comment here?
Uh, I don't get it.
Okay, approval of minutes over November fourteenth, two thousand four, uh, twenty-four? Two thousand fourteen, two thousand twenty-four, sorry. No, I have to make sure that I'm absolutely correct on the date, so two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion on the minutes, questions, corrections, comments? All of them favor?
Aye.
Warrants, counts payable, November twenty-second. Okay, sit down. Four million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty cents.
It was all school.
It was all school.
It's all school. But everyone, but, but we probably should make sure that we state.
We should state.
Yeah, this is school, so there's no
Yes.
um, question or everyone knows where it came from. So this was um, ninety-eight percent school budget. Their school. Um, fact.
Yep.
School.
So again, counts payable, four million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
Payroll, eleven thousand per November twenty-second, eleven thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
Okay, select board vacancy announcement, discussion and planning.
Would you like me to read Bill's letter of resignation? That's why I didn't put it on in the archive because the board hadn't announced it yet. We were required to post the notice of vacancy within ten days. Um, I apologize that we were not able to respond very quickly to things. We are very busy. Um, and we tried to respond to people as soon as possible.
I don't think there's a apology really necessary. I think the reason for why the letter was not posted up until now is, is absolutely correct. Um, this was just a select board announcement um, per statute that we had to announce a vacancy. Now, I think is a proper time to read the letter, um, because we have now officially announced the vacancy.
To the Pownell community, I write this letter to formally resign as a member of the Pownell with my current schedule conflicts, I do not believe it is fair to the community that I continue to hold this position. I now understand and truly appreciate all the dedication and hard work this community puts forth. Pownell has an amazing network of talented individuals. I feel at ease knowing my shoes can be filled. I believe Pownell has many bright days ahead. Thank you, William Petrell. Um, but I did respond to Bill and just ask him what his effective resignation date was. Um, I said, is it the day of your letter? And he responded, yes, it is effective eleven fifteen twenty-four. So that entire email chain will be uploaded to the archive now.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Excuse me. Um, the board's feelings, does anybody have any thoughts, feelings on this? Um, I'm, I'm move forward.
Oh, probably better to appoint than have a special election.
Yeah, definitely be cheaper.
I agree. I think by the time you have a special election, um, to replace someone that's, or, you know, and then you get re-elected again in March. Um, for the same position, I think that's kind of pointless. So
Yep.
Uh, is the board in agreement that a special election is not the best way to go?
I
I agree.
That.
But that said, it is a citizen's right to have a special election if they, if they petition.
Correct. Correct.
I just, like you said, if we do that, there's time constraints to it. We have to warn it. We have to collect signatures. We do a whole bunch of stuff and we'll be pretty much at our local election time in March.
Right, right.
At that point.
Right, it's kind of, we're just talking as if we were under the
Right, so I just want to make sure that's clear, but it is their right if they want to petition it.
So right now is the, it's the feeling of the board. From my understanding, unless someone has something different, that the board, um, agrees that a special election is not in the best interest of the town unless residents of the town petition at five percent of the registered voters to have a special election for, uh, the vacancy on the select board.
Correct.
Right?
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Alright, so there's that.
So moved.
Anybody else have anything?
I have a couple of those. But I'd like to hear from other people, too.
My only concern is that we have three months left, so we're talking two, four, six more meetings. We're going into budget. Um, somebody really needs to know about budgeting and our background in budgeting. Otherwise, I really don't see how much they could bring to the table. That's my opinion.
Okay. Carl, do you have anything?
No, well, I'm new to the budgeting, so I'm kind of, I'm kind of not going to answer that question.
Okay.
Well, I do agree with Angie's sentiments.
Jimmy, you've been here a lot.
No, I, I agree with Angie's thought process is there and, uh, see that we have a couple of candidates.
I'm giving this, excuse me, sorry. I've given this some thought, um, for the last week. Um, some fairly serious thought. My, my feeling is that we um, ask for, and I know we already have to. Um, I think what, what I'd like to ask is for letters of interest. I'd like to give a week because I, I think we need to move on this fairly quickly.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
In, in the letter of interest, so I'm gonna make you guys redo your letters a little bit, unfortunately, but that's not. It's just, it's just things that I've thought about for the last week, okay? Really. Um, in your letter of interest, from, from anyone who's interested in the position. Um, and I know they probably already contain it, but I just want to make sure that the general public has the same opportunity as the letters that we already have. My feeling are, I'd, I'd like to, budgeting was a big thing for me. I'd like to know um, what kind of budgeting experience that the particular applicant has or doesn't have. It, it's just things that I've thought about. Um, I'd like to, I'd like to know what kind of governing um, background they have, um, no, no matter what it is.
Type of community service.
Yeah, your community service background, the governing background.
Right.
Excuse me, is, you know, working, working with the community. Um, you know, I, I think that, um, I'd like to come up, I'd, I'd like to do, at that point, I'd like to set up an interview process. I'd like to have three questions to ask each candidate. And then I think at the end of that interview process on that evening, I don't think it would take a whole lot of time. I think, I think you could probably schedule.
All of them same thing.
All of them in the same night, and I think you could probably schedule twenty minutes, maybe per person. And then at the end of the night, we could have an executive session.
Yep.
And we could vote as a board on which candidate to fill, so that it is a very quick process.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want to drag it out for a long period of time.
But have the public, have everybody have an opportunity to apply.
That's right. So, so we, we set a date, I don't, well, well, we won't have another meeting next week, right? No, we're gonna have to.
Yeah, I, I asked the rescue squad if they could come on the fifth, so.
So we could do a different night.
So we could either do it before that or we could do it after that.
I'm, when they're coming on the fifth?
Yeah, so if you made it a week from tomorrow, letters will be accepted until Wednesday.
The fourth.
Fourth. And then we.
But is that going to give us enough time to, to schedule interviews because some, it's right, it's gonna be hard.
Know how many we're gonna have.
Right, or maybe just have the three questions and they could just answer the three questions.
I, I'd rather, I'd rather have them answer the questions. This is my personal feeling. We can do whatever you guys decide. I'd rather answer the questions right here under the gun.
I would.
That's just my opinion.
I like.
Just, just, I don't know.
I can't read people through email.
I, I understand that. I just was thinking.
That's my job.
Well, I would just, I think you guys decide. That's totally fine.
Or we could do like letters due the fourth. And then, oh, we could do, we can't do the following Tuesday because the night's like full of meetings here.
Why can't we do it the fifth?
We got a bunch of meetings.
It would just be tricky to schedule.
Right, if somebody, you know, and I'm gonna use one of these two in, individual applicants already, what if they have something already scheduled for the fifth? Wouldn't be fair to not be able to do an interview.
Right.
Okay, I'm just yeah, throwing that out there, right? Give, give people an opportunity to say, and I think we schedule that now. I think we say, applications are due on the fourth. Right?
Mm-hmm.
Or, or the fifth, either way. I don't think we could do an interview on the fifth.
No.
I think, I think if we moved it to, is there anything here the eleventh?
Oops, I'm back here.
I, not that I know of. Hannah, do you have meetings on Wednesday, the eleventh?
So if we did interviews on the eleventh, it's a week. It's basically a week to schedule interviews. We could schedule those interviews on the fourth or the fifth. We can back here the eleventh. That also gives the new board member a day to come in and get sworn in and participate in the meeting on the twelfth.
Okay.
Okay? That's just my line of thinking.
Like I said, I've given this a little
Question I thought, I have a question. The, um, the meeting with the rescue squad. Will, will it be hampered that we only have four members and that, and we won't have the
Shouldn't be.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
No, it's just a budget.
It's just, okay.
Budgeting meeting.
Just, just asking.
Yeah, no, good question, though. Good question, Paul. As long as we get a quorum, we're alright.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm not, I'm just thinking.
What happened?
I'm just, no, that's right.
So, does that seem okay to the board? We have applicants, applications or, or letters of interest are due by the fourth. On December, we will schedule interviews for the eleventh of December. Twenty minutes per interview.
And make a decision.
And make our decision on the eleventh, so that that board member can participate on the twelfth. The incoming board member.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Alright? I don't think we need to vote on that. We, I think we'll
Maybe just explain to the public that you all have the right to appoint and you can do so in whatever manner you choose. You could literally just name someone if you wanted to. Obviously, that's not what you're doing.
Right, and be diplomatic about it.
Understand.
That's a good point, yeah.
The board has control of that.
Yep.
Um, unless or until there's an election.
Could we, could we add that V L C T?
Statute?
Yeah, I believe it should be in the
It's in our pack packet.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Could we add that to these minutes? So that, so that it is very clear. I don't want to read the whole thing tonight.
No, and it does answer questions very specifically.
That's right, and that's, that's a great point. We, we as a board could appoint someone right now.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, I don't feel comfortable doing that. Um, I, I just don't. I feel that, that, um,
That we're announced that and
That's right, given, given the opportunity to everyone out there to step in or whatever, that's just how I feel is the best thing to do.
Stapler.
No.
What is that?
It's a stapler. It's our electric stapler. Someone must be out there.
Holy.
Oh, maybe Tom. Saw a car coming. So we're all, we're all in agreement. Um, on, on that, and like I said, we'll, we'll, I saw it. I'll, I'll be within the minute, Fred. Um, I I, I would like that V L C T
Yeah.
Female, put a new one back at least for the minutes. Thank you.
Fred?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that I came here tonight with the intention of rescuing my, the, the sheriff's since I found out about you, so we trusted you. He has experience in the things that you're concerned with. But I just wanted, I hate to, hate to break in there, but you
No, it's fine. I appreciate that.
Before I go further, I just, you know, that I didn't intend to rescind my, my letter.
And, and I'm going to be a hundred percent honest, um, one letter didn't swing me either way, two letters didn't swing me either way. I just think it's a, I think we give residents of the town an ample opportunity to say, okay, now we have announced this, maybe somebody didn't know it, maybe they'll hear it tomorrow. Right, Friday, Saturday morning in Stuart's, who knows, right? Somebody that really wants to be involved, okay, we give them an opportunity to
Apply.
Apply with a letter of interest and then come do an interview. Right, and that's, that's the only reason I was doing this. I just think it's a fair opportunity to
I completely agree. I didn't want you to go into the reach of
Oh, yeah. Yep, no, thank you, Fred, for that. Yeah, thank you. So we're all in agreement with that. I think we're, I think we're good with, with that agenda, unless someone has something else.
Nope.
Part-time cleaning job posting approval. Everybody read that?
Yep, yep.
Sounds good. Looks good.
Everybody's happy with that?
Yep.
All entertaining motion for Tara to post that part-time cleaner position?
Make the motion.
I get it.
Excuse me, all of them favor?
Aye.
Staff appreciation, holidays, celebration, lunch and gift discussion.
About humpers. Oh, our third year, yay. Um, Water Street has reserved a space for us on the twentieth of December. I'm hoping that you'll let us do it at noon and leave after lunch with a paid day for employees, some employees. They're not employees anymore.
It's a Friday.
It's a Friday, yeah. It's just a nice early day for the holiday. Um, it wasn't anywhere near what we expected the amount to be last year. Um, last year I got a lot of donations to play the game that we played. This year I'm just going to purchase them if you're okay with that. Um, because everybody really enjoyed that game and we had a lot of fun with it.
It was.
Um, everybody's looking forward to it again. Um, and then just the fifty-dollar Walmart. Again, that was a really nice incentive.
What's the board's pleasure?
I have no problem with it as long as we have the money in the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to take a motion to move forward.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? As Tara stated with, um, purchasing the gifts for the game that gets played, um, paying for the luncheon, uh, alcohol-free. Make sure we have that in there. I just want to make sure.
Bring that up this time.
I, I just want to make sure that it's in there because I don't want to, I just don't want to deal with anything else.
Mm-hmm.
Um,
Fifty-dollar gift card.
For, um, and, and I think that so, this is for an hour and a half. And if somebody's sitting there at one-thirty and they want to have a beer, that's on the long time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but, but from twelve o'clock until one-thirty, it's, it's all, it's on us. And then after that, it's on you.
Okay.
Alright?
Yep, thank you.
So I have a motion with those little tidbits in there. Alright, sorry Hannah, probably hard to follow, but that's okay. You'll figure it out. I know, I know because you're really good at your job. Um, I, I have a motion, I have a second. All of them favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Uh, select board ballot initiative discussion.
So, I know I brought this up before, and I started a little bit of controversy, but does the board have anything they would like to see on the ballot? I have one thing that I would like. Um, I would like to, and the language I will have to. This is not the language that will be on the ballot, but I would like to form a cemetery commission. And in doing so, you can, it's, it's basically an elected board. Um, so you have to elect to do it first, the first year, and then the following year you elect people to sit on the board.
So it's a two-year process.
It's a two-year process, and I've been trying to manage the cemeteries with a little, with some help from board members and Hannah, but it's just it's a lot.
It needs, it needs, it needs some
It needs a board. It, it needs, we need a cemetery commission to really, um, for the future of our cemetery.
Select board can't just make a commission?
No, no.
Okay.
Nope, you can form, you can
Form.
Commission.
You can beat the commission.
Be the commission, but if we want to form when it has to be.
Oh, that's I didn't know that. Thank you.
I, I would like to see that on the, um, yes, personally.
Because if puts it off three years, I just
No, let's get it done.
To do it.
There, there's a significant, for, for people who don't know, there is a significant number of cemeteries in the town that, um, need to be taken care of. There's, there's a lot of them. I'm kind of partial to the cemeteries because it's our town history. And, and when you, if you don't take care of your cemeteries, you lose that part of history. I, I just, that's just something that's under my skin, so.
And I was hoping we could have like another board, like task another board, but you can't do that either.
Yeah, right.
So just a little bit for me, um, anything else? Ballot initiative discussion?
No, I haven't come up with anything, honestly. We're not already doing.
I would still like to see the both of mine that I had asked for, only because the taxpayers are paying for it, and I think they should have a right to vote if they would like to keep the sheriff's department. Also about the, um, transfer station, only because it costs so much money and I think, and it's an advisory, just because they vote one way doesn't mean that we have to do that, but I'd like to know, you know, what the public like to see.
And that's what the whole point of you saying that before was.
Absolutely.
Opinion or for taxpayers.
And So I think you have to word it really carefully, Angie. Um, and I think so the sheriff's department is one thing to put out there, whether or not the town would like to continue with the sheriff's department or not. I think that's, I think that's kind of straightforward. I think before we put the transfer station on, I'm doing a little bit of research on that. Before we put that on, I think we need to educate ourselves, the board, we need to educate ourselves on, um, garbage removal because it's my understanding that if we don't have a transfer station, the town's going to be responsible, one way or another, of finding a place for the residents of the town to dispose of their trash.
Right.
Hey, Bennington to you. So, so the town, it could come back and the town of Pownell could have to contract with Williamson or Bennington or Shasberry or whoever. I just think, and I, and I don't disagree with you. I just think we need to do a little more research on, before we threw that on there. The sheriff's department is one thing. Right, we could put it as an advisory. I don't, I, I definitely don't want to put it out there as uh, yes, keep them, no, don't, and, you know, have that as a lock where we don't have any law enforcement. I, I ju, I think that would be a problem. Um, for the sheriff, I think we have to word it correctly, like, almost like the town manager, I didn't want to really bring that up. The only thing I could come up with at the time years ago.
Oh, I, I think if
Words mean things.
If we worded it properly, it would probably be fun.
It's just that these are issues that are becoming very, very expensive to the taxpayers. And I would like to, I can, I can reach out to the V L C T for an opinion, um, if they think that's something we could, or how it would be worded.
Right.
Um,
Yeah.
And then bring it back.
Right.
That's why I bring it so early, so that we
Right, no.
I had brought it before.
Rather than have it
Just like
Have a week storm.
Right, it's a
And put the work into it, so that they're, they're, um, really thought-out ballot measures because we've had some in the past that were not.
But I, I think before we put the transfer station on there, I think we need to do research as a board to figure out, because, like, we want to make it, we want to educate the, the voters before they have to make a decision. Right, so if, if our transfer station, and I'm going to use round numbers, right? But right now we're budgeting around two hundred thousand dollars for the transfer station. If it was going to cost us three hundred thousand to contract with Bennington, well, then it's kind of crazy.
Right.
Right, but if it's going to cost us a hundred thousand to contract with Bennington, then it's a little different. But I think we have to have that back, that, the, the fact in front of us before we
Before we decide we're going to turn around and put it on the ballot and then go out and do the research to find out, that would be stupid.
But I just, I think that's just, I think
Are you saying I'm stupid?
No, I would never say that.
I think it's
Especially what you said.
And I know where you're coming from because it is. It's a, it's a high-budget item.
It is. It's getting higher and higher.
I understand that.
And that's one reason we're working towards what we're working towards.
Okay.
But, but I, I don't disagree with you on that, on either one, really. Yeah, but I think we just need to
So could you check the V L C T? About, especially the sheriffs.
Anybody have anything else on the ballot? Moving right on. Discussion of town planning in the future.
Okay, so I'm not really sure where to start. I, over the last couple of months, I've been looking a lot at the town plan and some of the other plans that have been developed over the last, I don't know, ten years or so. Um, a lot of work was put into the entire Pownell, a lot of work and planning was into the town plan. Um, and I'm not sure that we use our planning effectively. I don't know that we're using these documents the way that it should be. Um, and I'm hoping that we can kind of come up with a new process or something so that we familiarize ourselves with these and then start to follow through on some of the planning that's already done. Um, and move the town forward with these types of plans. And the example I'm going to use is the Old Town Hall that is still sitting empty. Um, a year ago, I had planned and it was put on hold um, while we waited for the B C R C's plan, which doesn't offer a lot of injustice or insight for that building. So now we are still paying the same heating costs that we have been paying. I mean, it's the same to heat it right now as it was when we were in that building. Um, I don't, I don't know that people realize that, but it's sitting empty, not being used, and we are paying for it. Um, so just formulating a plan of what's next, how we're going to go move towards a point and also directing other boards such as Planning Commission or D R B to do different things. Planning Commission has bylaw updates, for example. Planning Commission has bylaw updates, for example. There are state regulations, state laws that have changed, that should be changed in our bylaws that haven't been.
Um, and the clock is ticking on those.
Things like that, like we're getting, we're, we're falling behind, cause we're not directing them to do certain things, or. I guess that's the way to put it. So I just wanted to bring this up as an initial discussion to figure out, you know, how can we do. This sort of thing better? How can we use the plans in the research, the research that's already been done?
But we gotta know first what our boards are doing. And what their, what their plans are doing. So maybe we turn around and say, what have you done and what are you going to do in the next three to six months?
Do they have direction though? Have they been given direction in the last?
No.
Been a lot.
I'm gonna answer that.
There's been a lot.
I'm here, have they been given direction?
No.
I don't believe they have.
So, so I think, I think step one. I think step one is on the twelfth. So, so I think we start with planning commission. Right? The D R B probably isn't.
Yeah, there's that, I just said them, but there's.
I know, I know, I know, I'm just.
It's a judicial, they can't do anything other.
They're kind of like an as needed, but even Parks and Rec.
Also, I, but I think, I think, right now, I think we bring in. Planning Commission Chair on the twelfth or representative. And find out where they're at, what they're doing. I think we as a board at that point can come up with, probably not that night. Right, but I think we can come up with, um, a direction to give them. Which, your point's perfect, okay, it's it's spot on, cause we have it, and I'm gonna take the blame for that, totally.
I don't, nobody's to blame.
I just, I just, you're right, but it's something that's just hasn't been done, and as the board chair for the last however, three years, two years, whatever it is. I'm gonna take responsibility for that, cause I I let that last. I'd like to, I'd like the planning commission in here on the twelfth to start with, and then, um.
We need to do all the boards.
Yeah, but I don't, I I.
Well, no, what I'm saying is.
No, you're right, you're right, but I don't wanna put them all in here.
I'd say, no, I'd agree with you there, but I'm saying they all have to be done.
That's right, and then I think we take, then I think we take Parks and Rec on, on, because, cause Parks and Rec is a pretty big. Operation right now, and they're overseeing a lot of stuff with the, with the. Forest, by the forest lane and all that, so I. Uh well, I don't wanna bring, I'd like to bring the planning commission in here on the twelfth. I don't wanna bring anybody in before Christmas on that meeting, right?
The twelfth is, is pretty packed too, but.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I'll see what I.
Well, you wanna go the first, you wanna go the first week, first of January?
I I'll look at it and see who I can get to come and definitely put it in the agenda of the.
Well, then, let's, let's go to the ninth of January.
Okay.
Let's put them off to the ninth. That might be better, because right now we only have a two-week, and I don't know if they have any meetings playing, playing commission in between now and then. Um, at least they could have a meeting amongst themselves.
I think they would appreciate the direction.
I think so too. So let's bring them in the ninth instead of the twelfth, it gives them another month to prepare. Let's bring in Parks and Rec on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Okay? And then, um, we can bring in Conservation Commission in. Excuse me, February.
Okay. That sounds good.
Alright. But you.
We'll all read the town plan.
Yeah, you know, we should.
It is, I mean.
We should.
Taking notes in it, and there are a lot of things that we could start addressing.
So, I I got a question. The um, each one of the boards, do they have, if they were individuals, there would be job descriptions? But as the board, as as, you know, you understand, I don't know.
They have like a mission statement.
Right.
But they don't have, I mean, it's not.
What are each board's duties and responsibilities?
Every once in a while, we would ask board to focus on certain things, and it has been.
What are their duties and responsibilities?
Done that.
Lives, that, whatever.
Listed and.
I would like, I would like copies of that, so that I could go over that before we met with the boards. So that when we are talking to them, we know exactly what their jobs are.
Okay.
You can, you could probably send that in them. You could probably send.
You don't have to have it tomorrow, though, but before, before.
Hannah's gonna help, she said she'll help.
By the way, you stepped up, Hannah, right?
Hey.
Nice job. Okay, is that good? You good with that?
I'm great with that.
Perfect. We're gonna move into public comments.
Very good.
No, second one, there's always two.
I know.
Any public comment here?
Um, yeah, Tom Zopper has his hand up.
Who?
Tom Zopper.
Okay.
Hi, select board members, Tom Zopper, Center Street, across the street from you guys. Um Angie, I just wondered, has uh the board. Uh surveyed the permit holders uh that use the transfer station to see if they'd be willing to pay a higher fee to cover the gap in funding?
Do.
We do.
The answer to that.
Means ask the individual.
Are they willing to pay more money? So.
Yeah, they paid two hundred dollars more each.
Tom, I'm, I'm gonna, we, we generally don't get into a question and answer. Um during, during the public comment, um. So, that's something we started this year.
Okay.
So, but I'm gonna answer that flat-out answer is no. Um. So, we have not surveyed anyone, but I'm gonna leave you to that. If you have any other questions, you know, we'll, we'll be more than happy. You know, I'm gonna, you still have a bunch of time left on here, on your three minutes, okay, I stopped it. Um, I'm more than happy to listen to what else you have to say, but if you could just email. From the board, questions like that, we'd be more than happy to email you back and answer those questions.
Sure, I'll, I'll be glad to do that. I guess, yeah, my general question was just, you know, what if um. You got a large portion of these permit holders to say, yeah, I'll, I'm willing to pay ten more dollars a year or whatever, and and so. Your, your problem goes away before you have to put it out to a ballot, but yeah, I'll, I'll put something in the email.
And we'll be, we'll be, we'd be more than happy to answer that.
Right, thank you.
One thing we don't do is, we don't have separate price for commercial haulers.
Well, but that's not, we're not gonna get into a. No questions to answer, Jamie, we're just.
I'm not, I'm not.
That's just not. Anybody else?
That's not even pertinent, it's not pertinent to what the, what we're talking.
Hannah, anybody else?
Um. Mike, what's your pleasure?
I will entertain a motion to enter into an executive session for personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
Recording stopped.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming in.
Recording in progress.
All set?
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session for personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session for personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
Recording stopped.
Oh, sorry.
Still tall.
Recording in progress.
We're good now. I want to entertain a motion to come out of executive session for personnel.
I'll make a, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to enter executive for legal.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All of them favor?[1768.92]